Mr. Greenwood?
Here.
Mr. Hodges?
Here.
Mr. Garber?
Here.
Mr. Mysalski?
Here.
Chairman Warren.
Good.
Please stand for a moment of silence. All of the presenters, do we have anyone who's not recognized as a senior?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public which stands on my nation, on my God, indivisible, that governs and governs us all.
Gentlemen, we have a second round of the agenda this evening. Any comments, questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve, probably second. Ms. Branch?
Mr. Hodges?
Aye.
Mr. Garber?
Aye.
Mr. Mysalski?
Aye.
Mr. Greenwood?
Aye.
Chairman Warren?
Aye.
Okay, we have a public commentary this evening. This is, uh, this is for a subject, topic. We have public commentaries later on for the redistricting. So for now, anyone with, uh, want to come forward, speak on any topic, please say your name, your district. We have three minutes, five minutes if you would.
Hello, I'm Jeanette Wagner. I'm from the fifth district. And I'm, I want to remind the county that we need to put in place the announcement that as of April 1st, let's see, there will be, uh, for a definition for dogs running at large. They have a, they, they order, where am I? From April 1st through May 31st of each year, for the entire county, the dogs are to be kept under the control of the owner, be it confined, restricted, or pinned up during these months. For the purpose of this section, the dog should be deemed to be running at large while roaming, running, or self-hunting off the property that's owned or custodian, not, and not under its owners or custodians, immediate control, now definition of owner. If I can find it, been having problems with my eyes. The owner is, any person, if any person has a right property, an animal keeps and harbors and has an animal in his or her care, feeds, waters, or otherwise maintains the animal, or acts as a custodian of an animal, or any person who permits the animal to remain in or about any premises occupied by him or her for more than 10 days, then they are responsible for that animal, for that dog. Now, um, I also would say if this occurs, the person that is responsible for that dog needs to make sure, has a rabies shot. That's the reason they first had this ordinance years ago, it was to protect the wildlife beyond. And in our county, it's just two months, in Panama, it's three months. And I'd like to see that come up because, you know, there's no schedule for things to be pulled. And so U.S. state governing body have the right to forbid the dogs from running at large, and it's out of the state code, it's a civil penalty. And if, you know, you so choose to extend that period, that would be great, especially for the animals. Um, now, very well. I understand that you will be entertaining something in ordinance that's coming up tonight. I would like to see put in that ordinance what was taken out, and that was the custodian, the definition of custodian needs to be put back in to make the person culpable to, you know, to have that, have that, be responsible for their actions. So I would ask you to put that in before you pass this ordinance if possible. And I'm, I'm sorry, I can't sit.
Hi.
Good evening.
Recently sent a dispatch to not about those ones. Concerning that same ordinance, I'm not sure in reading through that, how one gets an animal with microchips within three days. I don't believe the shelter does it, and you can't get into a veterinary office. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Jones, Chris County District 5, and I come before each and every representative group of active, concerned key wage citizens, county owners, business owners, homeowners, taxpayers, and constituents. I myself have been staying here for well over two years now, detailing specifics and questioning the value received from King William County's legal expense, for which 40 hours a month costs the same as an in-house attorney at 40 hours a week. I've explained how chargeability targets motivate billable hours. At the same time, the hourly rate discourages our staff to seek legal counsel when matters when they probably should. So what is the cost of that increased risk? There are better options available that would save taxpayer money while increasing the value of the service that you provide. Tonight, I'd like to highlight you for certain examples which demonstrate the work of this law firm and how it serves their own interests, not that of the King William County citizens and its taxpayers. Let's first look at the legal agreement between services, for services between St. Anderson and King William executed in 2019. Now, I've negotiated and delivered many professional services contracts. Never have I seen such loose terms and language related to the fundamental drivers of price, that being service fees and reimbursable expenses. I would certainly hope that this firm would not advise King William to enter into separate other agreements for services with other vendors with such loose terms. Since these terms clearly benefit the law firm, it appears maybe they made an exception. So let's talk about service fees. The contract reads there, quote, "subject to change from time to time." There's no reference to a public inflation rate or index. There's no requirement for these changes to be disclosed or even announced. There's no limit to the frequency of these changes. In 2022, a report of the state in the legal market by Thomson Reuters stated, quote, "Historically, when firms are trying to earn real revenue, that is revenue growth that outpaces inflation, rate increases are tried and true source." When the time comes to change, common courtesy would be to notify the client of this change. Since this firm reports to these five members of this board, did you receive notice in advance of the fee increase that happened for both lawyers and paralegals in January? Even Verizon and Direct TV let you know of rate increases before they happen. Let's talk about expenses. The contract reads, "King William," quote, "shall fully reimburse the firm for all out-of-pocket costs and expenses of any kind incurred." Again, loose terms that benefit the law firm, not the client. Two of the most prevalent expenses are mileage and copies. Without fail, each month, we are charged 61 miles for Mr. McRoberts to attend this meeting in addition to his hourly rate for driving. Who calculated the distance between Richmond St. Anderson office and the King William County office building is 30.6 miles? So that makes sense, I guess, if Mr. McRoberts is driving from the Richmond office and back to the Richmond office. What if he's coming from or going to his home in the van? Are we just paying for his ride home to stop off at King William? Maybe he's not even coming to Richmond at all. I don't know. The second bit is the copies. 25 cents per printout. You may recall a few months back, I called FedEx, Kinko's, and Staples, both for-profit companies, and found their black and white retail prices 30% less than what St. Anderson charges us for their cost. Did some research, a typical per-page cost is probably closer to 2.5 cents. We're paying over 1,000% markup per printout. That's not an expense, that's a profit product for this firm. As these are reimbursable expenses, not items from a slow-thray card, I'm sure this firm likes St. Anderson to provide mileage logs to support the start and stop odometer readings for each of these trips. I'm also sure that they can provide the cost buildup to support the 25 cents per printout. The contract says reimbursable costs and expenses, does not mention a markup or a profit, because the accounting treatment would be different if it did. And it does not provide a rate card for these common expenses. How else would they know the out-of-pocket costs without proper tracking and a bottoms-up buildup? The final comment I had is around business licenses. If we hire, this county hires a tradesman, let's say a plumber, an electrician, or a roofer that is based in Richmond City, to come out and perform services for this county, we require that tradesman to get King William County business license. I ask you then, why after $350,000 worth of service fees paid by the King William County taxpayer, isn't a business license required for this lawyer or his law firm? They're sitting here tonight, providing services to, for, and in King William County. Why, I've asked, because this under corruptions he does have, was the answer. So what's the difference between that Richmond City tradesman and Richmond City lawyer, both paid in King William County tax dollars, except for one charges a rate of 3.25, and I'm assuming the others are not, 3.35 or something like that? Wouldn't it be nice to get eternity, work as hard as King Lee residents as they worked hard themselves? From day one, this law firm has put out their, only their best interest about that of King William. Presumably, everybody in this room is here for the betterment of King William County. My knowledge, only one is afforded a mile of reimbursement, $335 an hour, sit here, and you generate profit whenever they click the printout. Thank you.
Is there anyone else this evening? Ms. Branch, anyone on one? Gentlemen, a consent agenda of topics before you?
I'll have approval of the amended consent agenda, Mr. Chair.
Moving to probably second, Ms. Branch?
Mr. Garber?
Aye.
Mr. Mysalski?
Aye.
Mr. Greenwood?
Aye.
Mr. Hodges?
Aye.
Chairman Warren?
Aye.
Two presentations this evening. First will be the proclamation presentation to the King William County Historical Society. Mr. Hodges, will you?
Did we, did we find it? It's not in our pack.
It is.
It's in the consent agenda.
I have a hundred.
You sure?
Yeah.
I, I had a blank today.
I've got 2018 commemoration of 320th anniversary establishment of King William County.
No. The store.
Oh, the store.
That's the same resolution, it's resolution 22.
And that's the point of confusion there.
Exactly. Right, resolution 22-18 commemoration of the 320th anniversary of establishment of King William County. Whereas on October 2nd, 1701, Virginia House of First passed, and Governor Francis Nicholson ascended to enabling acts, creating a distinct county with the Monkey Neck portion of King William County, which is the land that lies between Mattinah and the Monkey Bridge. Whereas April 11th, 1702, the area known as Monkey Neck, became King Williams County, the 24th county, then existing in Virginia. Whereas King William County was named for William of Orange, the reigning monarch of England, Scotland, and Ireland, known as King William III, who ruled from 1689 to 1702. Whereas King William County Courthouse 1725 is considered one of the finest examples of early colonial brickwork and courthouse design, and is the oldest courthouse in continuous use in the United States, and the oldest public building in Virginia. Whereas Lieutenant Governor Alexander Spotswood and the Knights of the Golden Horseshoe embarked in 1716 on the expedition to the Blue Ridge Mountains from Chelsea Plantation in King William County. And whereas King William County was known to Carter Braxton III, signer of the Declaration of Independence from 1777, 1786. And whereas King William County was the birthplace in 1898 of Lieutenant General B. Chesty Porter, the most decorated U.S. Marine in the course here, history. Whereas King William County is the home of three Native American tribes, the Mattinah, the Monkey, and the Upper Mattinah, which were part of Chief Powhatan's Confederacy, and is also home to the only two Native American reservations in Virginia, the Mattinah and the Monkey, which are also the two oldest reservations in the United States. Whereas during the 1720s, two counties, Carolina's possibly in form in part from King William County. And whereas King William County held a tricentennial celebration with numerous activities throughout 2002 to celebrate King William County's 300th anniversary milestone. And whereas King William County's 320th anniversary will take place on April 11th, 2022, and will be celebrated with a birthday cake in the county administration building, tours of the King William Historical Society Museum, and an archaeological day at the tavern site next to the historic courthouse. Now, therefore, be it resolved that King William County Board Supervisors joins with the good citizens of King William County in the commemoration and celebration of County's 320th birthday. We had further resolved that King William County Board Supervisors hereby acknowledges and commemorates his significant role that King William County has played in the history and development of Commonwealth Virginia and the United States of America. We had further resolved that King William County Board Supervisors hereby acknowledges and expresses their appreciation to King William Historical Society for their efforts in observing, discovering, and presenting the history of the county for contributing their knowledge in order to educate the public. And we had finally resolved that a copy of this resolution expressing the essence of the King William County Board Supervisors on this matter shall be conveyed to the citizen of King William County and the members of the King William Historical Society, and shall be spread upon the meeting minutes of said Board Supervisor, done this the 28th day of March 2022.
Have you all come forward to see this?
And as I can follow, it did right.
I usually ask, get on with the flag and back.
Oh, good.
Always thank you. Yeah. John, why don't some of y'all get squeezed in so I tighten up? There we go. That looks good. There we go. That looks good. All right, I'll take several shots. All right, ready, one, two, three. Move on here. All right, I stood again. One, two. And, uh, one more. I'll do one with that for the action. Just bear with me. All right. This is right.
Good.
Hold on, hold on, I got it. No, you got it, you got it. You got it, you're the man, you're the man.
Next time, we have the listening presentation to the King William Emergency Management Professionals.
Chair, please, I'll read resolution 22-20 for public. Resolution 22-20, recognition and appreciation of emergency management professionals during emergency management professionals' week. Whereas the Commonwealth of Virginia has established a state program of emergency management and requires localities to have emergency management programs to address the uraevid threats and hazards to which the people of the Commonwealth are vulnerable. And whereas emergency management protects communities by coordinating and integrating the collect activities necessary to build, sustain, and improve the capability to mitigate against, prepare for, respond to, and recover from, threatened or actual natural disasters, and acts of terrorism or other man-made disasters. And whereas emergency management professionals play an under-recognized and indispensable role in providing the leadership, management, and operational skills necessary to enable their communities, organizations, and agencies to develop emergency plans and procedures, ensure personnel are adequately trained, and exercise plans, provide emergency warnings, notifications, and alerts, and acquire resources to protect lines and property, and enhance resiliency to emergency events. And whereas emergency management professionals direct or support emergency operations, maintain dedicated emergency operation centers in 24/7 readiness, and actively serve operationally throughout the cycle of emergency events. And whereas emergency management professionals communicate and coordinate with a broad network of partners at the federal, state, regional, and local levels of government, in the private sector, and in non-governmental organizations, and within the general public. And whereas emergency management professionals possess extensive knowledge of the hazards and risks threatened Commonwealth and its communities, the specific programs and strategies available to address them, applicable fire, federal, state, and local laws, and compliance guidelines, and the roles of critical partners essential to effective preparedness, response, and disaster recovery. And whereas emergency management professionals assist allied professionals in the medical community, and in emergency response, business, nonprofit, and faith organizations to achieve preparedness, response, and recovery capabilities. And whereas a well-prepared and resilient community is the ultimate goal of emergency management. And whereas emergency management professionals serve as a critical link between government and those they serve, public outreach and public education undergird the effectiveness of all emergency management efforts. And whereas the Senate of the Commonwealth of Virginia has designated Third Week in March as Emergency Management Professionals Week in Virginia. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the King William County Board of Supervisors proud to honor the service and commitment of King William County Emergency Management Professionals and recognize their contributions to the lives, health, and safety of all who live, visit, and do business in the county.
Very good. Our emergency professionals come forward, please.
Come on in, tighten up. Come on, a little more. Now, come on in. There we go. You can hear, come up a little bit so I can see the gentleman's hand. There we go. All right, let's fix several. Little more, little more. All right, looking good, yeah, we fixed several. Do it again. Hey. Take all of those flashes. All right, you're ready, one, two, please. Great, thanks.
Give them a round of applause, please. Thanks for the. Okay, we're up again for a public hearing on the proposed redistricting match. Again, same rules apply, one opportunity of three minutes per individual, five minutes if you would, group. Go ahead and open the public commentary. No one wishing to speak this evening?
Are we supposed to have a hearing also, or just, just so we can? Public hearing.
Okay, I'll go ahead and close public hearing of the redistricting.
Mr. Chair, I'll have approval of orders for Q-20.
One second. Moving to probably the second, Ms. Branch?
Mr. Mysalski?
Aye.
Mr. Greenwood?
Aye.
Mr. Hodges?
Aye.
Mr. Garber?
My.
Chairman Warren?
And Mr. Chair, I'm sure the whole board shares in their appreciation of the hard work of the redistricting committee, providing the elegant and simple solution to the next 10 years of voter maps in the county. So, thank you, Mr. Kamlin, and your, your credit. Appreciate it.
Ms. Wagner, I see you. Thank you for the hard work. Next time, we have a general obligation, school bond, uh, founder of Mr. Sanderson of that important company.
Evening, Mr. Chair. Got a handout for you that's maybe helping with some of the small owners. You got it?
You're getting it.
You're the one that we have had on the desk.
Yes.
The, we met back in February of, uh, the other month, and this, a lot of this material is saying, it just, there were some questions from the public and wanted to have information available. But you'll recall that we talked through some of the equipment issues that the school board had in particular, going on a few years, and related in particular, the HKC and some other, other things as well, technology vehicles, school athletics. There was a division as to what the school board was asking the county to find, what the school system was going to be funding from, their own reserves, and grant fund in particular, so about 10, 10, a little more, 10 and a half million total capital projects they were looking to ask the county to help finance. Breaking out the years of where they are and the financing by the different projects, the different school systems as well. Wanted to show you again what your existing debt service looked like. This is the combined county and school debt service going forward, and you'll see that it drops off significantly out there in 2030 and 2031. When you look at the county's debt service, it actually increases a little bit in the next few years, and then starts to drop off dramatically in 2030, and then goes away entirely in 31 going forward. So you will have some capacity on the county side in some future years. The school's debt drops off in particular in 25, going from one and a half million to just north of 1.1 million. That's something that we're going to look to try to use that drop off in that service to mitigate the budgetary impact, I see. One of the things that we did want to talk about is, you may have seen interest rates have, have been on the rise. We talked about this when we were together back in February, and in particular about maybe moving some debt service, some products into the disbarling as well. But we've seen material rise in interest rates here in the last three weeks or so in particular, function of the Fed's action that they took the other, the other week to raise some rates, and really some of the comments that they were making about the, the need to continue to raise base rates at the federal level. That has translated over into a taxable treasury market, where we've now seen a 10-year treasury has gotten up to a 2.5% than it was in December of last year, hovering around 1.3%. So, so we've now seen that, that increase that people were, were thinking was going to come into the market. We did get, oh, a couple things here. One of the things that we've assumed in these numbers to show you the difference was to move what we had in 2023 as a borrowing into 2022. So you remember that we were assuming a 4% interest rate out in '23 and '24. The 2022 borrowing, we're assuming current interest rates as of right now. And so that million two for the tractor placement and the 350,000 for the treatment plant work has been moved into this borrowing. And so that million-two for the track replacement and the three-hundred-and-fifty thousand for the treatment plant work has been moved into this borrowing, increasing it from project cost from five million to six million five-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. The interest rate that we have now for the twenty-twenty-two borrowing is just shy of three percent. That rate was around two and a quarter when we talked back in February. So that's what you see as that increase in rates. You know, we should get to tell you that it stopped, but I don't know whether it has or not. We continue to see inflation as well, and that's playing a role in this, and the war in Ukraine is not, not helping, by itself. You'll all talk to me a little bit about when that race would be locked in if you decided to go forward, but we're not, we're not quite there yet, but still under three percent twenty-year borrowing rate. That's pretty good. Here, we've shown you what the debt service for just the twenty-two borrowing would be. Again, that's the full six million five-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars of project costs. Layer it out out to FY twenty-two. And so you can see in red there what the additional debt service over the current budget for the schools would be. So it's high point in twenty twenty-four, it's an increase of, of two-hundred-thousand dollars over your existing debt service budget of one million fifty-five, one million seven thousand dollars. We've assumed here the total plan, so assumes again the twenty-two borrowing and twenty-four borrowing. Again, the twenty-two are updated based on current interest rates. Very close to where we were in our assumptions last time, again, because we moved what was a four-percent borrowing out of point three into that twenty-two borrowing at three percent. So very close to where we were. I will say that the difference, if we were to keep the twenty-three borrowing in place, and let's assume it was a four-percent interest rate, would be about half a million dollars over this life of borrowing additional debt service to the county. So you are making some savings, obviously, if we were to borrow at three percent of that money versus, but assumed four percent out of twenty-three. There is obviously some, some assumptions there. The next steps, obviously, we need to have a public hearing today. Mr. Chairman, there's a resolution before you. Dan Siegel, who is with Sam Anderson, is acting upon counsel to the county. He's here to answer any questions in particular about the resolution. If you favorably consider it today, the PSA will sell their bonds on April twentieth. The interest rates will be locked in at that point on this, on this borrowing. So again, that's at two-point-nine, two-point-nine-eight percent. That will be locked in April twentieth, and funds will be available on May seventeenth. I'll stop there. Happy to answer any questions that you have either now or after.
Not necessarily. We decided that we are going to fund that tracks replacement. Is that in the works?
Is that where we were?
It was next year.
Yeah, but they had, the schools originally had it in to be funded for next year. The question was simply, we want to borrow the money now and lock in that interest rate. And that was Mr. Greenwood's idea, that we don't, we don't let that linger and risk, you know, with the needs already identified. So let's, let's get the money now, and instead of having an unfavorable interest rate when we.
Mr. Garber, it's not, it's not uncommon for a locality to borrow for multiple years. Can save long costs of each borrowing, not come back and do it next year either. So it's not uncommon for us to borrow. You can borrow for a maximum of three years or so under the federal tax law, but two years will be away. You would borrow money now, you would hold it into an account with SNAP state agency, and then you would spend that money as the project costs come in over the next two years.
This is just one. I said, we still have to come forward, they have to rate whatever they want to spend it for later. That's correct.
But Dr. White, you did say, let's say to me, I remember reading something somewhere of that you projected, even though you were going to try to do it next year, you projected maybe a life of three to four more years. Did I not read that?
For the track itself?
Yeah.
It's, it's crumbling underneath where the culverts are, so it's actually, we're doing some minor repairs to filling the cracks, but at some point in time, it's going to be a loss because we can't keep up with the crumble, the crumbling of the.
Is this one point two million dollars? It was also drainage issues there too. Is that going to be able to take care of the drainage issues? So that's probably a large part of the problem.
Yes, sir.
That will take you along.
Yes, sir.
And we're spending ten to fifteen thousand a year to keep the track in its capacity with bringing in builder and replacing and concreting and.
Anything on Mr. Seal?
No. The doctor, what is the danger of this trap? Competition, people coming here from all over the place, and our students.
The danger is when competition, if individuals trip, fall, ankle sprains, things like that, because of the way it's cracking. It's cracking alongside the tracks, so if they step wrong, they could twist their ankle. So it does become a hazardous hazard.
Have we had any?
Not, to my knowledge, not yet. But we are filling it. We are going along and filling it as we can. There's potential lawsuits. Would we liable for school, student, king? Could be, but, you know, we have insurance, but it could be, yes.
That was installed, or then, what was it, two thousand and three?
Two thousand and three, yes.
So this is a nineteen-year life, and we have financed that for twenty years. Same way with the.
The nineteen-year life, we just covered, is due to.
Yeah.
And at the time it was installed.
Yeah, but, you know, heating and air conditioning, all units. I'm thinking they're projecting maybe fifteen years on those, and we finance those for twenty years also.
Well, the projected usual life was the fifteen to twenty-year range, right? We currently, we're currently using something that I think are closer to fifty years old in size.
Essentially, you do all this at one time, fifteen, twenty years, whenever it is. It's time to do it all instead of staggering.
We still keep up the serviceable maintenance as well, so we can extend it as best we can, and that's why we've got to this point. It's just we have been able to service it as best we can, but now we're at the point where we need to change the, you know, new thing of apparatus.
And again, just back to the point, the reason that we're, we're moving this forward has as much to do with, you know, where, where the market's going.
Well, the heating and air conditioning units have been equalized.
And on that kind of priority punch list, the track was next up, and Mr. Greenwood, again, Rachel was so pointed out, that just waiting a year, we could be in a very different market, and that's a very unfavorable term. We've identified the need. It makes sense giving the prevailing winds to, to go ahead and get this funding secured now so that we can get, you know, have it, have it, where the project's ready to roll, and have it at the current still favorable rates that we're able to borrow.
Any other questions?
We think the debt only from day one to all of it, correct?
That's correct.
So, I mean, why not go ahead with it and finish?
We, we did, we did structure it a little bit. We're, we're not going to start paying principal back for two years.
Whether we do the tracker nights, that will affect it.
That's correct.
Right, so then I guess it's just a question for the schools, whether or not that, you know, what the capacity is for contractors.
We already have the, the equipment project. We're starting to, you know, work with contractors so that we can hit a summer deadline to go ahead. So we've already reached out to them. They're coming in, they're, you know, giving us an idea of the length of the project and what equipment they need, so we're already engaging.
I know it's not a lot of guarantee, but what are they saying about being able to fix the ground?
For the, the track itself. Okay, I'm sorry, I was talking about the, the, they'll be able to do it. They're going to have to dig it up and replace it basically. Because where the covert is underneath is where it's collapsed, and so that's causing the drainage with issues beneath the track, which is causing a cracking.
So are they going to move the cover? Not only get into the contractor part.
That's, that's, I actually, I say, that's a question for my director of operations, Mr. Stone.
I, I just wanted to, you know, is it truly going to fix?
Yes.
The new track design that we would bring in is a new concept from what we have from twenty years ago.
Was this a design efficiency?
I think twenty years ago, that was the normal design. I think they've come a long way in track design, and I believe that what we would be looking at would be totally different, and we wouldn't have the same issues.
Remember how much rain we've gotten up in that area. I mean, we've had events where we've had several dozen inches of rain, but we had people lose their homes because part of their backyard washed out and disappeared. So, you know, we've been living with, you know, ever-changing circumstances from the weather as well.
Okay, thank you. Okay, well, we're back up for the public comments. Okay, there being no one, close the public comment.
I'm in approval of Resolution twenty-two dash nineteen, Chair.
Mr. Greenwood. Mr. Hodges.
Hi.
Mr. Garber.
Hi.
Mr. Spolsky.
Hi.
Chairman.
Moving on to new business, you have
Good evening.
Good evening.
Supporting tonight is a resolution requesting that we be able to use the school split levy funds that are in the county possession, not to exceed a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And these are vehicles that are needed. We're currently running additional trips to save on fuel. We're using more vans for small field trips instead of buses, also because of our bus driver shortage. But the immediate needs right away, we have a work van that has, has multiple issues and it leaks oil on a regular basis that needs to be replaced. A vehicle, replacing an older van that's going to Richmond every day. An additional vehicle is needed as we have additional kids going to Richmond that we don't currently have a vehicle to maintain. And possibly a car if money allows, as we are currently driving a two thousand and four on board tours to Goochlin and back every day. So this resolution is not to exceed. We will use state contracts for either used vehicles. We have had a good partnership with a state contract vendor for used vehicles in the past, and we will use, if no used vehicles are available, we will use all state contracts to use to buy any vehicles.
Was this originally in the twenty twenty-three capital plan?
So we have in our capital plan each year to purchase vehicles out of our carrier of our funds. We're currently in limbo of the twenty-one audit, so we haven't been able to purchase any of this given here. And so this is a request that's much needed, but will decrease the number that we would need in our next request.
What will that leave in the one balance?
So the split levy funds, I believe, is sitting at close to eight hundred thousand. And we would work closely with the finance director of the county to get prior approval before we were to push go on anything, and then all of those bills would be paid directly through the town as the county holds that split levy fund.
So it's currently eight hundred thousand, and then we would subtract the one eighth?
Yes, sir. Not to exceed one eighth. Any other questions for me? Thank you.
Mr. Hodges.
Hi.
Mr. Garber.
Hi.
Mr. Spolsky.
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood.
Hi.
Chairman.
Next up, we have Latisha Low, Director of Social Services. Discussing Child Abuse Prevention Awareness Month.
Chairman, supervisors, this is the expert, Mr. Hodges. Again, I'm Latisha Low, and I'm coming to you this evening to ask you about the resolution, to adopt the resolution for child abuse prevention awareness month, and just to give you some information about child abuse prevention awareness and Wear Blue Day. Before I proceed, I would like to just recognize my new family services supervisor that saw us on April first, named Ms. Melissa Kenny. She actually served on the DSS board for Kingwood and family with us. And we partnered with Mr. Jeffrey Lane, who represents BAC Fikers Against Child Abuse, and they partnered with us last year. I think Mr. Hodges, you were there when we did our memorial ceremony. So I wanted to recognize them this evening as well. But I do want to let you all know that during the month of April, we do recognize National Child Abuse Prevention Month, and the importance of communities working together to help families thrive and prevent child maltreatment. As DSS Director, I encourage the community of Kingwood and County to increase the awareness about child and family well-being and work together to implement effective strategies that support families and prevent child abuse and neglect. Every child has a right and deserves to be safe and free from harm. A child's life can be positively changed and even saved by aware and active community members. Many situations and conditions are preventable once community systems and programs are engaged. Child abuse and neglect cuts across all demographic areas and impacts entire communities. Research has proven that adverse childhood experiences like abuse can result in long-term health impacts and increased costs to society. In twenty twenty-one, statistics confirm that in the state of Virginia, there are over five thousand two hundred and forty children in foster care system. Fifty-two-point-four percent of those are male and forty-eight percent are female. Children typically enter the foster care system through founded abuse and or neglect. As of June thirtieth of twenty twenty-one, data suggests that Kingwood and County received a total of one hundred and eighty-nine referrals of abuse and or neglect. Fifty-seven percent of those referrals were that were invalidated due to not meeting the screening criteria. This number is down for twenty twenty. In twenty twenty, Kingwood receives a total of two hundred and two referrals, and seventy-six percent of those referrals were invalid. So we're seeing more referrals being validated to provide services to keep families intact and keep children safe. These numbers speak volumes as it comes to reducing the number of referrals and keeping the children safe. Anyone that suspects the child, that a child has been neglected or abused, can make a child protective services report by calling our agency during normal business hours at eight-thirty, four-thirty, Monday through Friday, or by calling the twenty-four-hour CPS hotline. I ask you tonight to please join us in wearing blue on April first, twenty twenty-two, to provoke child abuse prevention awareness and invite you all to come to a small ceremony that we will be hosting at Kingwood Department of Social Services on April first at eleven AM. And to join the community to bring awareness of child abuse prevention for the children of Kingwood and County and all over the world. It takes a village to raise a child, but it takes a community to keep children safe. Thank you.
Mr. Garber, there's the four days on which this.
Resolution twenty-two twenty-one, proclaiming April twenty twenty-two as National Child Abuse Prevention Month, and declaring April first as National Wear Blue Day to raise awareness. Whereas in state fiscal year twenty twenty-one, fifty-two thousand two hundred and sixty-three children were reported as possible victims of abuse or neglect in Virginia. And whereas fifty-five children dead as a result of abuse and neglect, and twenty-two cases of pending investigation as of December fifteenth, twenty twenty-one, in the Commonwealth of Virginia. And whereas child abuse and neglect is a serious problem affecting every segment of that community and finding solutions requires input and action from every. And whereas our children, or almost valuable resource. And whereas our children or almost valuable resources and we and will shape the future of King William County and the world. And whereas childhood abuse can have long-term psychological or emotional and physical effects and have lasting consequences for victims of abuse. And whereas protective factors or conditions that reduce or eliminate risks and promote the social environment and developmental well-being of children. And whereas effective child abuse prevention activities see because of the partnerships created between child welfare, professional education, health, community, faith-based organizations, businesses, law enforcement agencies, and families. And whereas communities must make every effort to promote programs and activities that create strong and grabbing children and families. And whereas we acknowledge that we must work together as a community to increase awareness of child abuse and contribute to promote the social and environmental well-being of children and families and be safe, stable and nurturing environment. And whereas prevention remains a destiny for our children and families. Now, therefore, the result that the Board of Supervisors of King William County, Virginia does declare, does hereby proclaim April twenty twenty-two as National Child Abuse Prevention Month and urges all citizens to recognize this month by striving to improve quality in life for all children and families. Be it further resolved that the Board of Supervisors of King William County, Virginia does hereby declare, does hereby declare, grab the April first, twenty twenty-two as National Wear Blue Day and urges all citizens to wear blue to help raise awareness of child abuse and neglect and bring attention to prevention efforts and resources available to children, families, caregivers, and educators. Done this day, twenty eighth of March, twenty twenty-two.
Mr. Garber, entertain a motion to approve.
Mr. Chair. I'm approval.
Second.
Move and second is Mr. Branch.
Mr. Garber.
Hi.
Mr. Skalski.
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood.
Hi.
Mr. Hodges.
Hi.
Chairman Moore.
Hi. Thank you. Let's see. Next up, the county's new acceptable use policy, Mr. Low.
All right. So before you, it is the acceptable use policy was cut about a couple of weeks ago. We did send you a revised copy this morning. The only thing that changed was we needed to put in the reference language to exclude the share and public office office if they have their policies replaced. Other than that, nothing else has changed. Yeah.
Any questions, Collins? And political training will follow, will accompany us?
Yes, sir.
We won't read.
Fair enough.
Dylan, entertain a motion.
Move, move.
Sir.
Mr. Branch.
Mr. Skalski.
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood.
Hi.
Mr. Hodges.
Hi.
Mr. Garber.
Hi.
Chairman Moore.
Bye.
I appreciate it.
Next up, we have the dangerous dog legislation update, Mr. Roberts.
Good evening. Before you, it is a draft ordinance that was made necessary because the county code here in King William has a parallel ordinance for dangerous dogs. And the state law significantly changed about a year ago to provide a new way of dealing with dangerous dogs. The ordinance in front of you is directly from the state statute. There's certainly nothing intentionally different in here. It was drafted by the state. The ordinance was simply my adopting their language for your local use. Another option, of course, is for you not to have a parallel ordinance at all, which is certainly an option as well. But the current ordinance you have on the books is not the correct law, and so it needs to be amended. So with that, some of the major changes are, I will tell you, having prosecuted these things over the years in various counties, there's always confusion as to what to do with the dangerous dog. Can I leave it with the owner? The law wasn't really clear before. It seemed like that was not an option. And many animal patrol officers had to seize it. Well, that means that you've got to feed it. And then you've got to incur expense. Can you get that expense back? What if the owner doesn't have any money? You know, all of those kinds of questions came up. One of the things this does is it makes it clear the animal patrol officer under certain conditions that safeguard the public can in fact leave the dog with the owner, which of course saves the public the cost of taking care of that dog before trial. Another thing that is really clear in here is the procedure. It was always kind of unclear in the old law what the procedure was. Now it's very clear and spells out exactly how it goes forward, how it goes to trial, what the standard of proof is, what the misdemeanor procedure is that applies. It's all very clear. Another thing that this does is in the old law, there was a distinction between a vicious dog and a dangerous dog. Vicious dogs, the common wisdom was the dogs that bit you twice. Dangerous dogs are the ones that bit you once. Well, this does away with that distinction and just declares dogs that can be declared dangerous. And then what the penalty is can be up to termination of the dog's life under some circumstances, can be fines to the owners. If there's repeat dangerous dog pronouncements, there's further protections to the public. You know, it seems to be a pretty well-written law. Now, I don't prosecute them locally. I understand the Commonwealth attorney does. He may have some comments about this, but from my perspective, the state law is what I have attempted to reflect in this ordinance. And so if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
I guess the question, didn't Miss Mason say three days or third day?
I'm sorry.
Dealing with the chip.
I think she said three days, but that's after a court makes the determination.
It's true, but I'm just saying that the ordinance actually says third, correct? That's the way I. I read only chip. It's one of the requirements.
I do know I adopted it directly as the state statute sits.
Yeah.
Yes, it is. Yeah. Dangerous dogs signs for this third day.
And I don't know if you could get the chip in third day. No, I just, I made a note when she stated that.
Yeah, my, my, my question is, of course, we'll, we'll deal with that appropriately if it can't be done, can't be done.
In order to be written, that's a, that. To be charged with that violation, the animal has to physically break skin.
And it has to be severe. You know, I mean, it can't just be a minor abrasion. I mean, the state law says that. If it's just a minor abrasion, the court shall not find the dog to be a dangerous dog. So I think we're back to a serious fight.
Mr. Roberts, the C here that on page. So paragraph B, the custodian has been struck. Does it infer that ownership extends to someone's dog's name?
No, I can actually address that because that was a good question that was raised by the lady of public comment. The fact is owner is used because it's the defined term. In chapter sixty-five of title three point two, owner in this chapter shall include custodians, people that have care and feeding of the animals, et cetera. So it could be the babysitter of the dog, for example. If that's the one that's in charge of the dog at the moment, they could be actually, you know, the ones who are deemed to be the owner. That is something that would have to be investigated by the animal patrol officer to determine who should be brought forward and what charges. But yeah, but custodian is still in the law, man. It's just an definition and not.
So if someone has a stray dog at their house, you assume ownership after a period of days of feeding and caring for that dog, right?
Yeah, I mean, obviously, if it's a temporary situation, you hand the dog back to the owner.
Well, you know, sometimes you have to, you might have strays, you might call animal control, it might take them a while to get out there.
Well.
Is it ten days? What is the?
I don't think there's a specific time, but it does say people that have assumed the care and feeding of the animal is his definition.
And so basically, if it's a stray dog and it comes to your house and you feed it or all.
If you're responsible for that dog's care and feeding, then yes.
Oh, twice.
You are responsible, so. That's my understanding.
So the two questions that we're asking is we've established that the timeline for the tipping is this thirty days and that three. And that's how I read it as well, right? We read it as the case and then the custodian is still, you know, within, within the larger laws, in a different section. Right? Making sure we all, we all understand that the case and agree to that as the case in that. Right?
Here, how does this affect our county ordinance? Is this the replacement for our local county?
That gets what you're saying.
Yes, sir. It's, it's underlined and stricken. Any new language is underlined. The old current language here is stricken. And for some languages unchanged.
Is, is the law, is the leash law global or is that a state ordinance?
Leash law in King William County, we, we do have some, but they only apply to certain.
There's a group that wants to come, you know, talk to us about the leash.
I think it's in that, there's one she's talking about, correct, isn't it?
Well, this is, you know, it's.
Right, right.
But the year around.
It's around there, I know.
It's on a subdivision that it's nothing in, though, nothing in the home law of association and addressing.
It can be restricted. Are those ordinances? Sure. Going with this subdivision.
I'll say it again.
Are those HOAs or are they ordinances that regulate the lease law in subdivision? That's why.
So then there are two ways to look at it. We have county ordinance for countywide leash law for April and May. And then we have subdivision ordinances for a limited number of subdivisions that have developed, and that's year round.
This particular, I'll, I'll say the subdivision was from Colorado. Is that one of them?
Well, they look and I, I can't say, I don't know.
If you could maybe get back with them later, yeah, they, they want to come before we ask it for something.
And it is a procedure they do, that they petition the board to add them to the list of neighborhoods that do not have a leash law.
Well, if you could just check.
Sure. I wanted to, I wanted to say this, the state code says three days on that impact of the chip. You're correct. And that's just three days for the state law, which is what we had in the county.
So which, which would be?
Three.
Says three, it says three.
Right. The section that I found in our, in our draft says thirty, but I don't.
Now, there says three, the draft says three.
Forty, yeah.
Right. I think Bill and I seen the same thing.
Three point two, that's sixty-five forty, dangerous dogs, down on the paragraph. On the end. They're here. Paragraph D, really kid.
How about that word?
I saw this. It's in here under the thirty days.
When I was in Auburn.
It's dealing with restrictions, but I think it's that. I want paragraph ten of the state code under that subdivision. Now, we're really sure we're looking at the ordinance ten. And on the F, the next section says three days also. This is.
Good line seventy-seven.
There is a part here. It's the second page, down below the memorandum, second page, top of the thing. I don't know. I saw it. Thirty days somewhere else.
Okay. All right. I, I see there. Yeah, no, I found the same thing that you found further along. Where it lists out conditions.
It was the money divorce here.
Yeah, because then you go further, we get to line two oh seven, and it's within thirty days of finding an animal dangerous dog. So it's ten days, nine, one, the shall, and then it's provides documentation, it's provided documentation. The animal is going to be planted with electronic identification registered to the owner.
So you're conflating what happens when a summons is issued. Those are things that the court, the court often has following the issuance of a summons, following an application pursuant to subsection B above, which is issued by an animal patrol officer. They can find, these are all mazes, may confine the animal. Upon being served, then you go to the one seventy-three, upon being served with a summons for dangerous dog, the owner shall not dispose of the animal other than by euthanasia, that's held a case for adjudication, the court's intent powers may compel the owner to produce the animal and to provide documentation that has been with, had the microchip. That's a different thing. That's, that's, that's saying you can't take the dog away. That's completely different. That's if you're retaining the animal and. You know, I guess if you're, because we're worried that the dog is a flight risk for this court, I don't know, but that's.
But bail.
That's, that's what that addresses. The section itself of what the court in the order gives them thirty days to. So after you have a hearing, so the line seventy-seven is kind of like bail conditions for the dog. And then after you have the hearing, that's the thirty days.
So I guess again, it's pulled right out of state code, but it's just odd that the court would or the, the legislation or the law in this case should be that specific as to what the court's going to do with contempt power, I guess, but.
So these cases, so like if, if, if someone had a dangerous dog tonight, right? Our court doesn't meet, our general district court won't meet again until two weeks, two Thursday from now. And so there's a period of time in there that the dog either is at the animal shelter or what the county is paying at least temporarily for the dog to be housed, or in a discount section, the dog is on house arrest, for want of a better word. And those are the things that the court can order that, you know, you, I could call the judge and say, Judge, you know, these people are going to take this dog to put it on a plane and send it to, you know, a non-extra-variable country. Can the microchip, can I, can we get an order to much the dog, it's totally without care? That, that's fair. That's, that's what that is. That's different from after having a hearing. You know, arguably, counsel may be involved, you have to continue it. So there, there's a period between the summons being issued and the dog being adjudicated, was what I'm saying. That's the first thing, three day deals with pre-trial.
So the chip is, is only, if they called all four, is it that the dog.
Right. And it's a mag. It's not a requirement.
It could still be deemed a vicious dog and.
Actually, that three day says they have to produce proof that it is microchip, not necessarily. So people, a lot of people, myself included, our dog has microchip already, so all I have to do is find that piece of paper somewhere.
Plus, if it is a change, I think I read in there also, there's a change in location on this move. Authorities have to be noted, the location of that now.
Yeah, yeah. So that's, that's intended to avoid. You know, you guys might imagine, these are highly emotional cases.
Oh, sometimes. All right. Back to you, Mr. Ross. Oh, I'm sorry. Just laying the hand here, the section ten dash six, now mechanic case for the subdivision of McCullough Park is not listed in this. Now, I don't know if this is the most term or not.
So they need to come before the board and request.
Yeah, they need to petition the board to add that to the list of and I think that would have to be added to the county ordinance.
All right. Like, I don't know, the procedure that King William follows, and some counties require a petition to be signed by a certain percentage of the folks in that subdivision, but it's really up to the board.
These are members of the homeowners association, I think, the officers. So they have to, they may have to pass petition around. I guess we have to.
Again, I don't know what process you all follow or have followed or passed. It may be that you have never required anything except the petition. And then it's up to the discretion of the board or whether to.
Mr. Chair, can I make an admission to accept this ordinance?
Also, I ask if you wanted to table this to everything, it's questionable and clear. Also, I ask if you wanted to table this to everything's question more in clear.
State code, we've had all these bunches look at it. I don't know where we can go from here.
There has to be a public hearing, that hasn't happened.
We're with Park. It's just initial draft and input session.
Or public here.
Okay, moving on to. I will love him.
So I'd like to do is present different options for personal property tax reduction and get your approval for the method to ease personal property tax burden on King William citizens that's associated with the anticipated rise in vehicles' assets values. Staff has discussed and evaluated their options and we are recommending the use of an assessment ratio. I think that is falls in line with what the board has discussed previously. So Virginia Code permits local assessing officials, that would be the commissioner, with the concurrence of a local governing body to apply an assessment ratio to the actual native values. Due to the extraordinary year-over-year increases caused by the pandemic. This is one option for you to be able to combat that. When an assessment ratio is used, the assessment value remains the same as published, and the tax rates remain the same. But taxes will be calculated on only a percentage of a vehicle's value. Use of such assessment ratio for tax year twenty twenty-two does not automatically commit the board to the use of a ratio in future years. And it is understood that a proposed assessment ratio will be calculated based on a percentage that will approximately equalize with vehicle values from tax year twenty twenty-one. So if it is found that vehicle values in King William increased by an average of twenty percent from last tax year, then the proposed assessment ratio for those vehicles would be close to eighty percent. Since it is not currently known what the average increase in vehicle value is for King William specifically, staff like were to approve this assessment ratio method, the understanding that the matter will be brought back to the board as a resolution at a later date when the exact value is known. Use of an assessment ratio allowed for the capture of broken county should not have an effect on the FY twenty-three budget. Currently under consideration as the budget was already built on last fiscal years or last year's assessed values. We conservatively assume King William vehicle values increased by twenty percent and PPTRA would necessarily decrease, the personal property tax on a fifteen thousand dollar car would increase by a hundred and sixteen dollars, sixty-two cents without the board's intervention. But commissioner reported last time. Other options would be, one, you could lower the personal property tax on specific categories of personal property in accordance with an amended Virginia Code. This would be calibrated correct. It's difficult, calibrated correct tax rate to equalize anticipated revenues requires more information than we have at present. And we've got a tighter timeline to get a tax rate passed through our current budget. And then in a future year, we have to drastically change that rate again. The second option would be to waive the license fees. Because of our split levy policy, license fees constitute revenues that are dedicated entirely to the school division and the anticipated revenue loss of approximately four hundred thousand dollars or entirely by the school division would be in the county, may not be able to fund the school's requests. And then a third option, you can change the assessment methodology, or I should say the commissioner can change the assessment methodology. While it's required by code for localities, utilize a recognized price guide purposes of assessment. All localities use data, now by J. Power, data publishes an assortment of values ranging from clean retail to high-end, clean low value at low end. King William does not use the lowest valuation. But it is not recommended that this valuation type be changed just for this current situation. That would lead to just inconsistency in valuations for cars from year to year, and it's completely up to the commissioner to take it out of your hands to address a little bit of time. Any questions?
I was looking at the various counties that you had listed here, and what they've done. Westmoreland County, are they lowering the tax relief, increasing the tax relief on the state or, you know, not the state, like the ratio or exactly? I'm not understanding that.
Westmoreland?
Yeah, Westmoreland would be the last.
They're looking at one, lowering the assessment ratio.
That would be, that would be the relief. Is that, is that the relief?
No, that assessment ratio, that's exactly what I was describing as our first option.
Didn't there's some relating or as item number two that if they face certain House Bill Senate bill is approved? Or were they approved?
They were approved. That is given the. Fifty-eight point one dash thirty-five.
If we work with the first one dealing with the percentage, how would you determine it?
We would, once we know what the values are, then we can calculate how much they actually went up from last year, not as a whole. Of course, we're going to have increases in the amount of vehicles, but the valuation percent going up.
They, it does look like they owe it to us in Westmoreland County. It says attempted to provide additional tax relief by applying a designated sum of the annual sum provided by the county law.
Oh, yes, that's, that's three.
Yeah, that is.
And that was, would be where it's not where you just set the PPTR rate differently and equalize it with the rates, you have to dedicate a revenue, put that chunk of money aside and then use that as your own relief.
Number two, why, why do we have to, or not have to, but why is there only one option of getting rid of the license fee? Why can't we just change the license fee? If we just have to, we would only lose two hundred thousand, which might be the same thing as doing another cent off on the other side. Wouldn't that be, that way it would be for the personal property side rather than for the system. Would that make you worry?
One, yes, you could definitely make that license fee what you want, but I'm unclear what that would, I guess.
You said two hundred thousand would be too much because it wouldn't be able to fund the school's budget request and we only have to. Then maybe we could meet the budget request if we think it's the next item when the agenda is talked about with another production might be there, then maybe we wouldn't do that because we could take care of it here. I'm just saying, would that be possible?
But wouldn't it probably get more like you're doing a percentage?
No, no.
Well, I think he's, I don't think he's talking about that necessarily. I'm going to, I'm going to interject and say that I don't think you're talking about doing that in isolation. You're talking about doing that in addition, aren't you?
Maybe, it depends. Depends on what the figures.
Based on what we were talking about in the last meeting, I understand your desire to be something along the lines of the ratio relief or something like that and vehicle licensing.
Unless it's too much.
Right, but that's that.
Yeah, exactly. But I'm thinking that way would, this way would it affect? It would affect every vehicle user, not just the ones that are high cost vehicles, which are.
Well, right. And so maybe it's a reasonable time to actually just go ahead and loop in, make this one big conversation about what makes more sense to do. Either with vehicle license fees or a penny on the school side of the rate. Because I, I think it would be the case that if we did both, we would be compromising the ability to fully fund school requests.
Well, if it's, if I remember correctly from the last meeting, it's seventeen thousand some other vehicles in the county.
Correct.
Are we separated from Westmoreland on that? No, I don't think so. So the math is going to work out to be more than four hundred thousand dollars.
Well, right. So we need to have a clear understanding of what, what the revenue stream actually is, because now talking about it, I think we said something more in the neighborhood of.
Seventeen thousand eight hundred, if I'm not mistaken, vehicles. Does that sound right or?
We, we added, we added eight on it in some of this space. The total revenue was last year for vehicle license.
It's going to be confirmed. For the upcoming segment.
Okay, well, there's your numbers.
That's what we have in our budget.
So there's your numbers.
We've been all in.
Well, right. And so that's, that's my thing here, because part of the discussion here was that we felt that there was sufficient room on the school side of the levy to talk about reducing it another penny and still being able to fully fund the request, just not having as much of the, you know, the positive back, yeah. So it would make sense then if vehicle licenses, some of the things would help this situation and help provide, you know, a good amount of relief, that we look at doing that. My, my personal desire would be to continue to fully fund the school requests like we've been able to accomplish this year. So I would think that one or the other would not be on the table. If we did one, it wouldn't be the other.
So the whole get rid of the license fee and then not doing anything longer. So that four hundred takes care of that.
I think. There's numbers, but, you know.
I'd be okay with that, that or like half this and half a cent here, but like I said, I don't know which one would make the best bank for the citizens.
Well, then we need to know what the actual impact is, because when we got the final numbers on what a penny meant, it was less than a hundred thousand dollars, right? It was like seventy-eight thousand dollars for the school, for the school side. So doing away with the vehicle license fee is more like doing five cents.
Thinking out loud, it's, it's cleaner to try and address the personal property issue with something like a ratio or something that we can.
I think, I think that's where I'm headed with it right now, because if we really, if we, if we look at these numbers side by side, and yes, that vehicle license piece is a very big impact to the school budget. And, you know, I think we'd be, be having a similar impact on average if we stuck with what the original discussion had been, doing a ratio relief and then looking at the possibility of doing another penny on the school side, which again would not put them in, in the red. Right. But would on average to a taxpayer save? You know, if we said a penny and a half is about forty bucks, you know, and a penny is going to be pretty close, you get close to that thirty dollar amount right there in addition to. In addition to doing the ratio adjustment for the personal property tax, so that we're not actually collecting on what we again think is a transient spike in, in prices due to all kinds of, you know, externalities.
One more finger from commissioner.
Yes, so she is working on getting the actual values so that we can actually have something, have that percentage. That was last we spoke, yes.
What's that repeating?
Well, remember last time she says she didn't have the final values.
No, no, it's like, this is software work. Now.
She hasn't gotten the DMV yet.
Okay. I think this is what you all are saying, two and a half. And you do a percentage of personal property, whatever the, I'm good with that.
Now.
That's two on the school, half on, on the general. And then whatever percentage did they come up with?
Right, now, which is pretty close to what we, what we have later. So far, it's a two and a half, right? What's going to be presented is possibilities. I think one of them is like eighty-three five, right?
Right, that's two and a half is.
Yeah, that is, that is.
That's where you go.
Now, the commissioner, in her presentation, had said that one of the things that the, we had the ability to do was to delineate classes. Now, can we do that with the ratio? Was that an option only available to us?
According to the other localities, that's what they're doing.
Are you speaking of?
So. Now, what, what she said is basically we had to, for the first time ever, we had the ability to delineate personal and business properties classes before they all had to be taxed the same. Now, she had said that what most localities are doing and what Mr. Hudson is saying, that is true, that most of those localities are doing, not only providing relief, but they are partitioning classes, vehicles also. And providing that relief to, as I recall, it was, was all going to, you know, privately owned.
Privately owned used cars.
This is right.
So that's pretty much what everybody's doing, that is looking at.
I don't know about everybody, but.
It's a short list.
This is the short list.
The one example that she brought to us last time, which was Portsmouth, right?
Yeah.
Generally, with the issues they've already had, we will hate that much complication.
True, true enough. That was a question. I didn't know if it was, and evidence was available to us, because he mentioned it when we talked about messing with the rate, that we could, you know, delineate classes, vehicles, and then tax them at different rates. I just didn't know if it was an available option if we went with the assessment ratio.
It's available, but even some of these here have just gone with assessment.
Right, and that might just be the way we need to go, because it's going to affect everybody the same way.
Make it less complicated.
Okay, generally speaking, more agrees with the concept?
I think so. No, so you're crafting.
Yeah, in hearing and giving us directions so that you have the right. Know that it's going to be what you want.
Didn't we just do the answer?
I think so.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, you have this chart in the brackets that explains the reduction that would be in the property tax rate for the school division. Does everyone have that? If you, if you move from right to left, you'll see the, the projection that we stated eighty-six cents. The school division would pay forty-eight cents and the general county would pay thirty-eight. My recommendation to the board was the middle number, which reduces the school division amount by one cent. And the county would, would give back the half a cent, so it would be a one and a half. And then what is on the table from your March four B work session is that we further reduce the school division by two cents. Keep the county at half a cent. And you can see that in each scenario, the school division's request is fully funded. What is less is the amount of revenue that would be projected to be left over in the event that all revenues came in dollar for dollar. In at eighty-six cents, it's a three fifty-three, at my recommendation, it would be a two fifteen, and then reducing it by one cent would be projected in one thirty. So Mr. Barbers, oh, excuse me, to Mr. Ringwood's point, if you were to reduce the the motor vehicle license, you can see the estimate there is four hundred twenty-five thousand. If you exchange that for two pennies, it would actually be more. If you just go by the available funds that are going to be left over, it looks like it would be about two hundred and twenty thousand for the two pennies. It would be, it will be four hundred twenty-five thousand. If you, if you took the motor vehicle tax, which then, as I think Mr. Hudson's alluded to, you're really starting to squeeze the school division if you would take all of that. Now, if you will reduce half and and leave the property tax. And leave the property tax rate at, uh, at what I had projected, it just wasn't sent, then you would probably get to the same place. But either way, uh, it's all about money. And, uh. You can probably get, get to whatever amount of relief that you're looking for for your, for your residents. And, uh, I think it's clear that the property tax will probably be greater than the, uh, than the motor vehicle tax.
And it, it would also leave them funding because they have not figured in their increased.
Yes, sir, that's correct. That's correct. So their request of twelve seven oh two, two three, three six would be met by all three, uh, with all three options. And Dr. White, if you would say you want to add anything else to that, you will come forward. Uh, you guys know your cash flow, you know what your, what the same back was.
So I think the thing I'd like you to keep in mind is our state budget, uh, numbers that we have projected, they have not been finalized. So until we know exactly what our state looked like, we have a lot of moving pieces at this point. Um, my understanding is the governor's budget is what we build our original budget on. The House and Senate have been very different. Um, so we honestly don't know from the state side what that is.
So traditionally, when, when do you do it? May?
Um.
April?
It depends. It depends. Um, the General Assembly, um, I believe left session without a balanced budget. Um, I think they convene in two weeks. April fourth, so possibly after that, um. Hopefully before June thirtieth.
So we have, what is it, cutoff day for round of, of, of budget? I know you mentioned.
June thirtieth.
June thirtieth.
You never want to get that close, but you do have until June thirtieth.
So we have a little bit of time.
I took, well, I think the biggest difference between the House and the Senate budgets right off the bat is the difference in pay increases. There's one big difference, what, what is another one?
Pay increases on the capital plan, the capital money that we were hoping to get to fund the Hamilton Homes project that wasn't in the debt. On one, on the Senate side, it has to be an application process we have to apply. The House was staying with the governor's on budget. Their at-risk money changes, um, lottery money changes. There's a lot of different scenarios, um, our, um, impact program money changes. It's a lot of moving pieces. Um, not substantially, but there's a lot of literal moving pieces back and forth.
Are there any pieces in there that could fall one way or the other that make you anticipate us needing to plug a gap somewhere?
I'm not prepared to say that at this time.
Or, yeah, listen, help us out.
Right, right, I'd like, I, I, I don't know if there's any like must-have programs or pieces of, of spending in there that could fall that, that you would then hope that we could set in and pick up.
Right, so from looking at what we had asked in prior years and this year, like, yes, our ask was more. But overall funding wise, we, we are not asking. Um, we did have more state funding this year in the governor's budget to offset that. So other than the raises, um, we were able to eliminate jobs and do some other things in house to keep from coming to you for additional funding.
Are, are y'all looking at your Q? I know you didn't vote.
I look at it daily, sir.
Okay.
Um, we're, we're about sixty-five thousand over budget this year. So we are, um. Not doing other things to have money to make sure we get to the end of the year.
But what about the full cash flow next?
Um, we had budgeted, um, about fifty thousand more in our current year, but that won't be enough. We would have to reallocate some funding.
Yeah, I mean, in some remedies, I heard him say it, it dropped a few pennies and that went on the other night and it's fifteen cents up.
Yeah, and keep in mind, I mean, most of our buses are, all of our buses are diesel, and then we're running cars that are gas.
Yeah, diesel.
Yes, sir.
So if there's no other questions about this, uh, here is the schedule, just to remind you of the public, on April the eleventh, there'll be a public hearing on the overall budget. So there'll be a public hearing on the tax rates, there'll be a public hearing on, uh, utility, uh, claim, uh, or utility, that's for claims with all these.
Yes, it would change the utility.
Right. And then, uh, once, once the public hearings are held, then following meeting would be April twenty-fifth. The board could then now begin its deliberations, the setting of the budget. You chose to adopt it because it's not, uh, you don't have enough information, you have some time, uh, to follow before you do. I would remind you now that, uh, the sooner the, uh, the tax rates can be adopted, the better the commissioner is in, in compiling that information for tax bills.
Regardless of where the General Assembly is in their work, by the time April twenty-fifth goes around, it, it, you know. We should be pretty set in what we're gonna have on the table and be, be, be able to offer everybody at that point. I think the question's gonna be less whether or not the General Assembly's done, whether or not we're ready. You know, comfortable that we, we've got everything either in there or out that we want in or out. Because this happens every time it's a new guy. And one time it went on particularly long, and we were still able to get our votes passed.
On the tax rate, when we, even if we didn't even mess with the personal property, which I still wanted to do. But if we went, uh, two and a half, school and general, wouldn't we still be okay?
Yeah.
That's what I'm getting at, we could get, we, we could really go with the rate in my opinion.
Right.
The way it is. So that there's no delay in coming out with a tax.
Well, right, and even on the personal property side of the rate, I think what we kind of decided, that we want to adopt to, to, to give that relief isn't adjusting the rate. It's doing, uh, an assessment ratio, it's literally reducing the percentage. Right, yeah.
We should have that information clearly by, by the April twenty-fifth, which is just, we don't want to increase, we just want to level it. Okay, uh, again, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, you have my report in your, in your, uh, in your packet, I'm not gonna cover everything going. Uh, we'd like to, uh, announce, uh, to everyone at the meeting that special dates. Is that on April twenty-third, in this room, from nine AM to one PM, that's a Saturday. The Economic Development Authority is going to hold a, a planning session. Uh, they're gonna do some brainstorming on, uh, on what they feel like is their role. Uh, looking at, uh, the different aspects of that economic development. We will lead them through that process and, uh. I'm confident it will be a productive one. And it won't interfere with their regular meeting, which is held April thirteenth. They'll be able to, uh, sit down and concentrate a little bit more on, on this, uh, planning effort. Also want to let the board, uh, know that the, uh. The old jail, uh, up at the, uh, old courthouse, uh, the roof was replaced there at a cost of thirty-six thousand one hundred fifty dollars. And a capital funded, uh, I believe it's been sitting there for a little while, but, but, so, uh, that's, uh, that's completed. Uh, the week of April twenty-third looks to be when the foliage test will be for the public radio system. And if that goes well, then the system could possibly go live in late June, early July. And that'll be good, we're, uh, we're communicating, uh, all the time, the handover. And, uh, trying to make this a very smooth transition once it, uh, once everything falls into place. And finally, Mr. Chairman, I want to thank everybody who made it out to the, uh, the Little League opening day last Friday. Uh, it was, uh, it was a nice event, uh, conditions were a little damp for playing them games, but that's still the, uh. The kids are out there with their parents and, uh, and the coaches and I, I think they're in for a very good season. And it's just good to see that many, uh, uh, young people and, uh, and volunteers and everybody that contributes to that, sponsors, uh, and so forth. There was a lot of, there was, so, uh, uh, you have a good product here in this county, you should be very proud of what your partnership has been with. Very good. And, uh, you also have, uh, in your package, the number of, uh, department reports. I think anybody has any question, we'll notice, um, that's good work that's done by all the departments. Encourage you to continue to look at that monthly, if you have any questions, we'll, we'll add something to it if necessary.
Please, finding department reports, there's being pulled straight out of.
We were just talking about that.
Sure, that's easy.
Yep.
Great, it's really important.
And they're, they're really easy to read.
We're getting, we're getting. Takes a while, we'll get it.
Thank you.
No, no remarks from me tonight other than to say thanks for, uh, thanks for coming, everybody, and thanks for, uh, hanging out with us, and we'll see you in a couple of weeks.
I don't have a whole lot, but I, and Matt, correct me if I'm wrong on this, but every day we have court. And the county of King William, we have attorneys come from Matthew, Slosser, Richmond. And just about Ken Riko in where you can talk of, and I don't know that one of them has a license in King William. Really, that's all I got.
Well, as Mr. Ashcraft mentioned, uh, the event at the Boston Rec, that was, that was a lot of fun. Like to thank, as a member of the Boston Rec Commission, I'd like to thank Mr. Moore, Mr. Hodgins, Mr. Ashcraft, Mr. Hodgins, come. And Mr. Campbell, for taking those pitches, you did your best to make this, uh, the three supervisors look good.
I thought you resembled Sandy Koufax.
You know, this part of the show was, was a, uh, Richmond Squirrel's mascot, nothing, the kids loved it. But it, it, it was a good time, it brought back a lot of memories. I did and myself actually played ball there within probably two years of the initial career. Uh, I want to thank everybody for coming. I'm done.
Looks like you had a pretty big crowd together, uh, it's like one line's getting smaller and smaller all the time. Guess we skipped a few on there. Let's just get through with this budget and move on.
I'll wrap it up, it's good to be able to acknowledge our legacy responders and. Where Blue Day. Be able to make it front. You're in rate, it wasn't going to leave me at the ballpark that night. We ever get a chance to do something like that, yeah. I'm, I'm, it's, it's a great time to get out and see a little surprise, it's probably close to five hundred and more people.
Yeah, it was a group.
So with that. Motion to.
Mr. Chair, I move that we convene and close meeting in accordance with section two point two dash thirty-seven eleven eight twenty-nine. The code for any to discuss terms or scope of a public contract because discussion in open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the board. And in accordance with section two point two dash thirty-seven eleven A seven, to consult with legal counsel, consultants and or staff on a matter of probable litigation. In which the county may become involved because discussion in a typical meeting may adversely affect the litigation position or negotiation decision of the board. So.
Mr. Greenwood?
Hi.
Mr. Hodgins?
Hi.
Mr. Barber?
Hi.
Mr. Muskowski?
Hi.
Chairman Warren?
Charlie, you hung in there. Hung in there. Yeah, that's what.
Great. Mr. Chair, I move to reconvene in open session.
Mr. Hodgins?
Hi.
Mr. Barber?
Hi.
Mr. Muskowski?
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood?
Hi.
Chairman Warren?
Hi.
Mr. Chair, I move that we accept S R one fact.
Mr. Barber?
Hi.
Mr. Muskowski?
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood?
Hi.
Mr. Hodgins?
Hi.
Chairman Warren?
Hi.